We're going to call the meeting to order. My fellow commissioners. The first item is the adoption of our agenda. Does everyone had a chance to review the revised agenda that was at your desk? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is the adoption of the April 27, 2017 minute. And I assume that everybody that sat here for eight hours has now read that lengthy document to you, watched the video.
Special thanks to Kelly for doing the minutes on that.
Doing that.
She actually caused us to get an email saying that she was one of the bigger users of our streaming on the computers.
And she got them done within one meeting, so she does get credit for that. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item four is the recognition of council members. So do folks that are here want to... Ed Kendall? Councilman Kendall, do you want to speak now?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Actually, I rushed out here in the traffic that we've got. I left home at 3:30 and it usually used to take me about 10 minutes, but it took about 30 today. I didn't come from Atlanta. I do have my jacket, but at any rate, I'm here tonight, we were here tonight on number four, the request for an SPC for the Fairfield Inn Suites, but they've decided to defer that until May the 25th, which I think is good. We've had several meetings, and I think we're making a lot of progress with the community out there. I think there's one other issue, and that's dealing with the traffic, and we're going to be looking at that. And hopefully, next time we appear before you, we'll have a resolution or something that we can all agree on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, do you want to speak now, or later with your items? You don't want to speak at all? Okay. Anybody else that we've missed? Okay. Our next item is an update on the Parks Plan to Play.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Michael Briggs, Department of Transportation Planner. Just going to briefly do an intro and then toss it over to Park staff. Recall in the last couple of months that we have gone over, provided an overview of walk and bike and in motion, and the transit, walking and biking functional transportation plans for the city. And today, we have Parks present the Parks and Greenways Master Plan, and it's called Plan to Play. The graphic on the screen shows you the relationship on the transportation plans, and that all of these inform each other and are tied together through Nashville Next. This summer, we will have amendments to Nashville Next, and we'll be asking you to adopt these other transportation plans. And we want to specifically call out the Greenways component, a Plan to Play for transportation purposes. Additionally, since this plan includes parks and open space, there are relationships between the community plans and Plan to Play. And so just remember that we have 14 community plans that go through a number of the parks and open space items. And so now, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Rotz and Cindy Harrison with Metro Parks to give a brief overview on Plan to Play.
Good afternoon. I'm Rebecca Rotz. I'm in the Planning and Facilities Development Division of Metro Parks, and I wanted to thank you for letting us come today to talk a little bit about Plan to Play, the Metro Parks and Greenways Countywide Master Plan. The plan was adopted by the Park Board this past March 7, and represented here today is Brenda Diaz Flores, your Park Board member. The plan was updated for many reasons. The previous plan is over 15 years old. The recent adoption of Nashville Next, changing needs and trends in sports, recreation, maintenance, sustainability, and Nashville's growing population. The process started by gathering information, information about the existing Parks and Greenways system. Our plan is divided up between land facilities, programs, operations, and funding, and we'll be focusing on land and facilities today. We gathered information about comparable cities and counties, and we gathered information from Nashvilleians, including over one dozen public meetings and direct user surveys. We then used the county transect to analyze access to parks based on distance and walkability. The results show areas served by parks, they're in the green on the right, and gap areas that have limited access to parks and recreation opportunities. One of the key findings shows that Nashville does well in acres per resident when compared to our peer cities with 22, almost 23 acres per resident. But with the growing population and the projected growth, if we don't increase Parks and Greenways acres, then the number of acres per resident will drop significantly over the next 10 The resulting Plan to Play recommendations call for an increase in acres, and more specifically, that park acreage be allocated based on different park types. They are, go from pocket parks to regional parks, as well as signature parks like Centennial, specialty parks like sports facilities, as well as Greenway corridors. Additionally, the land recommendations prioritize the distribution of the acreage, where population growth rates and density will be high, so we're using Nashville Next centers and corridors. The gap areas of unmet need, this map now on the right shows the gap areas with an overlay of each park type. And then where urban park pressure is high, so even if we have service in an area like downtown with the increasing population, we'll need to increase park acres. And finally, where social, economic, and health disparities warrant. And now, I'll turn it over to Cindy to talk about trails.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Cindy Harrison. I'm the Greenways Trails Project Manager for the Parks Department, and appreciate you letting us talk about our plan today. I'm going to try to run through the really important details first. I've got a lot to say, and no, not a whole lot of time, so I want you to get the facts first. The Greenways program began in 1995, and since then, we've accumulated 102 Greenway trails. At 27, plus or minus, or, sorry, that includes Warner Park roads that are paved but now closed to vehicular traffic. The Plan to Play update identified a need for 53 new paved trail miles, 50 unpaved trail miles, 130 new acres of Greenway land, and we updated our goals for connecting neighborhoods to Greenways. And that update includes having the rural transect user groups be within a mile and a half of a trail, the suburban T3 being within a mile of a Greenway trail, urban within three quarters of a mile, and the centers in downtown area being within one half a mile of a Greenway trail. But really, those are, that's good data, and we're happy to have that, but there's so much more to Greenways than just data. I think we all know that Nashville's the it city, and what we found out through the Plan to Play process is that Greenways are the it park facility. They were the most valued and the most requested park facility that came out in the public process, so we're really excited about that. Greenway trails are about recreation, multimodal and alternative transportation, connectivity, conservation, water quality, economic development, tourism destinations, healthy living, and social well-being. Give you all some. Currently, we have over 120 agreements with property owners for the Greenways that we have. We've conserved over 2,700 acres of floodplain lands and corridors to date, and the plan recommends an acquisition of an additional 4,000 new open space acres. Property owner agreements are the friendly ways to get trails built. We don't condemn property, but we do highly rely on the Planning Commission and the planning staff to be the front door to protecting open space for environmental reasons and future trail opportunities, and we really appreciate that and hope to continue those efforts. We couldn't do the development that we've done without you. You all have helped to incentivize open space dedication, Greenway conservation easements along the county's water corridors, and we hope that you'll continue to make riverfront frontage sacrosanct for public space, to tighten up steep slope regulations so that we can provide trails along ridge lines and make regional connections, and encourage trail-oriented development. We've got other partners that we'd like to recognize too, Metro Water Services, MDHA, Public Works, TDOT, MTA, all of us working together, especially with the recent master planning process, has really helped us in our efforts. We continue to need your support to preserve the desired floodway and 75-foot buffers for Greenway development and conservation. We'd love to have the entire floodplain, but we're happy that you've supported us in those great set-asides for us. The definition that we put in Plan to Play, "Our linear corridors of open space with or without trails for conservation, recreation, and non-motorized transportation. Greenways may exist with no improvements at all for habitat protection." The program initially focused on seven major water corridors that are still being built out. Those include some Blue Way systems, but our focus has expanded to include urban connections This is our master plan map. It's a little probably hard to see here, but I'm going to try to walk you through it. The Plan to Play identified development goals for Greenways, and I'll run through those pretty quickly. Goals to increase connectivity for multimodal transportation, to increase access to outdoor recreation for health and wellness, to preserve open space, goals to use Greenways trails and open space as an economic generator, to complete the water corridor system that we started with, and complete the downtown and midtown Greenway trail loops, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Invest in key connections from Greenway trails to parks, schools, neighborhoods, civic institutions. Goals to connect cultural and historical amenities and destinations. Goals to coordinate Greenway land acquisitions with MTA, Planning, Public Works, and other agencies. The plan identified goals to strengthen the connection to public transportation, sidewalks, and bikeway networks, to meet the level of service needs for trails with emphasis on walkable and equitable access in Nashville Next centers, urban, suburban, and rural transects. To increase connectivity to affordable housing in higher-density areas. To use natural, utility, and infrastructure corridors to create regional commuting options. Goals to develop a comprehensive wayfinding system, and to strategically locate amenities such as drinking fountains, outdoor fitness equipment, picnic shelters, mile markers along the Greenways. So how and where will we implement these goals? It's a 10-year plan, and funding and right-of-way acquisition are key to the development of Greenways. Cooperation and participation of landowners, developers, and government agencies are vital. Our new corridor priorities identified in the plan, probably the most exciting right now, maybe to me, are the downtown and the mid, the downtown and midtown loops. The downtown loop would include finishing out the North Gulch to Bicentennial Mall Connector and the South Gulch to South Street. The midtown loop involves the 440 Greenway and Browns Creek Fairgrounds to Rolling Mill Hill and Riverfront Park connectors. If you can see, the blue line there represents the Charlotte Rail to Trail project that we are rail with trail project that we hope will be the spoke that connects the downtown loop to the proposed midtown loop. Tourism and cultural trails would include Music City Center to the Adventure Science Center in Fort Negley, Stones River to the Hermitage. Regional connections that we hope to make include Mill Creek to Williamson County at Concord Road. We're just a couple of miles away from making that connection. Rails with trails to Wilson County, rail with trail to Chatham County, and the Trace Connector going south. Underserved areas, the east part of Nashville, Elmington Parkway area, the northeast quadrant, east-west, and southeast Anchor Park, which our planning department's working on master planning right now. Other key connections, major bridges and boardwalks as connecting icons, the Opry Mills Connector from the Cumberland River Pedestrian Bridge out to Opry Mills, the Brookmead Park to Bell's Bend pedestrian bridge and/or ferry, and Neely's Bend to Stones River via pedestrian bridge or ferry. And of course, connecting schools, libraries, neighborhoods, and commercial districts. Those are new ideas or new trails. We also want to finish up the water corridor trails that we had started. The Cumberland River includes Brookmead Park, expansion in both directions, the East Bake, expansion in both directions, Rolling Mill Hill to the Cumberland River Pedestrian Bridge, Bell's Bend Park to Cleese's Ferry, and the TSU campus. Mill Creek, Rivendell, in both directions to Blue Hole Road and Orchard Bend Park, Blue Hole to Ezel Park, Cobleton Road to Concord Road. The Harpeth River, the Soccer Complex to Highway 70 River Walk expansion, and Harpeth Bend to Old Hickory Boulevard Commercial Center. Richland Creek, Main Loop to England Park, England Park to West Park, the Main Loop to St. Thomas Campus. Seven Mile Creek, Whitfield Park to Emmonson and Creve Hall. Stones River, Lidle Park, I'm not sure if that's what we're calling it now, but that's also under master planning with our planning division. Ravenwood and Ben's Properties. And finally, White's Creek. We're about to begin the Phase Two of Fontanel Trails there. And on May the 20th, we're opening White's Creek, Greenway, and Mullins Park. Everyone's invited, 9 o'clock. And then, Lower White's Creek, Ashland City Highway to Bordeaux. So I know I ran through that really quickly. We're really excited about the possibilities. We're excited about the transit component of Greenways and how that can work with the other plans that you all have adopted. We hope to see you out on the Greenway.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Rebecca or Cindy? Brenda, any commentary you wish to add as our Parks?
This looks great, and it's been great to be part of this as well, and I think getting into the way to amend this will be really fun, and I like that the departments are working together, so I think there's a bright future for this plan.
Thank you. While we're continuing ahead, I just did want to note, we were bumped, I guess, for budget hearings, and so today's Planning Commission meeting will be replayed tomorrow morning at 10:30 on Channel 3. Council Lady Johnson, do you want to come up now or wait and go with your item?
Council Lady Johnson stuck it out through the entire budget hearing last night, so I'm sure she's anxious to get back over there.
And then I'm headed over there now. Thank you, Director Sloan, Vice Chair Farr. I am here to speak on item seven, which is currently on consent. It's for, I'm sorry, number six. Number six, which is currently on consent, is 2017 SP 024001 at 3413 Old Anderson SP. And I have promised you all that I would come back with the sign-in sheets to confirm what I shared at the last planning meeting, and that is only three from this list, putting this as part of record. So some of, you can pass some of that around, just keep one as part of the record, but that is representative of the people who attended the meeting. It has their address, names, and contact information. I did send an email out to everyone. I did receive responses again, and so the majority of people are in support of this SP. And with that, I just ask that you give approval to this project because it is single-family homes, and I think it fits in well with our community and what was requested by those who attended the community meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoy the budget.
Okay, so we are ready to move on to item F, which is items for deferral and withdrawal. Good afternoon. Items for deferral, withdrawal, starting on page five. Item number two, 2016 SP-062-001, Earhart subdivision SP. This is a request to rezone from RS 15 to SPR zoning on Earhart Road for up to 180 units. The staff recommendation is to defer to the May 25, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item number three, 17 SP-005-001, delivery at Fifth and Monroe. This is a request to rezone from MUN to SPMU zoning and for final site plan approval on property at 2035 Fifth Avenue North to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item number four, 2017 SP-020-001 Fairfield Inn and Suites. Request to rezone from ORI to SPC on properties along 29th Avenue North to permit a hotel. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 25, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, and Commissioner Blackshear is recused from this item. Item five, on page six, 2017 SP-021-001, the Glen Rose SP. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SPR zoning on properties on Row Street and Evelyn to permit six residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 25 Commission meeting. Item number nine, moving to page seven, 2017 S-012-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 10, the Trail Hollow subdivision, 2017 S-043-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property on Trail Hollow Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 11, 2017 S-097-001, a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property at 2223 24th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 12, 103-79P-005, Riverfront Shopping Center. This is a request to amend a portion of a planned unit overlay district on property at 1432 Robertson Road to permit an addition to an existing car wash facility. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the June 8 Planning Commission meeting. Item 14, on page eight, 2017 Z-041PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 40 to AR2A zoning on properties on Hudson Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8 meeting. Item 16, 2017 SP-037-001 Hickory Trails SP. This is a rezone from RS 20 to SPR zoning on property located at 630 Old Hickory Boulevard to permit 13 residential units. The staff's recommendation is to defer to the May 25 Planning Commission meeting. Item 17, 2017 SP-038-001 at 1339 South Dickerson Pike SP. This is a request to rezone from CS to SPMU zoning on property located at 1339 Dickerson Pike to permit a bus service, a pair facility, as well as office. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 25 Planning Commission meeting. Moving on to page nine, number 19, 2017 SP-040-001, 6035 Neighborly Avenue. This request is from R6 to SPR zoning on properties on Neighborly Avenue to permit seven residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Moving on to page nine, number 22, 2017 S-068-001. This is the Crowley Woods subdivision. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots at 426 Crowley Drive. On page 10, number 23, 2017 S-111-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots and remove reserve status on property at 522 Radner Street. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the May 25, 2017 meeting. Item 26, 2017 Z-037PR-001. This is a request to rezone from CS and RS 5 to RM 20A, MULA, R6A, and RM 9A on various properties south of East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8 Planning Commission meeting. And finally, on page 11, item 28, 2017 Z-050PR-001. A request to rezone from CS and R6 to RM 15 zoning on property at 622 Crowley. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the May 25 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you very much. That's quite a long list today. Yes. So items two, three, four, five, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, 16, 17, 19, 22, 23, 26, and 28. Okay. Commissioners, those are the items that have been deferred or withdrawn. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. The next item is the Consent Agenda. Great. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on consent today. Items on consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate those items unless a member of the audience requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The consent agenda starts on page six. Item number six, 2017 SP-024-001 on Old Anderson SP. A request to rezone from AR2A to SPR zoning on property at 3413 Old Anderson Road to permit nine residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number seven, 2015 S-135-001. This is the Town View subdivision. A request for final plat approval to create two lots on property at 901 Town View Place. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number eight, 2016 S-199-001 Haney Central Park Plan. Request to amend a previously approved plat by amending building height restrictions from two stories to three on various properties on Ozark. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 13, 2016 Z-044PR-001, on page seven. This is a request to rezone from R10 to CS zoning on a portion of property located at 981 Murphysboro Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Moving on to page eight, item 15, 2017 SP-036-001, 326 Welch SP. A request to rezone from OR 20 to SP zoning on property at 326 Welch Road to permit up to 81 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item number 18, 2017 SP-039-001 Villery Place. A request to rezone from RM 20 to SPR zoning on property at 106 North H Street to permit six residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Moving on to page nine, item 20- Moving on to page nine, item 20A, 2017 HL dash 004 dash 001, 2251 Leavenham Pike. A request to apply historical landmark overlay district on property located at 2215, pardon me, 2251 Leavenham Pike, zoned R 8. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And related case, item 20B, 2017 NHL dash 002 dash 001, the Bel Air Mansion Neighborhood Landmark Overlay. A request to apply a neighborhood landmark overlay on properties, various properties on Leavenham and Pike, and zoned RS 20 and R 8. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Moving on to page 10, item 24, Taco John's, 2013 UD dash 002 dash 009. A request for a major modifications to the Murphysboro Pike Urban Design Overlay Standards on property at 2827 Murphysboro to permit a modification to the required facade width and sidewalk widths. And staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Commissioner Blackshear is recused on this. On page 10, 27, item number 27, 2017 Z dash 048 PR dash 001. This is a rezone from OR 20 and RS 5 to RM 20A on property at 341 Oriole Avenue in Austin. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Moving on to page 11, item 29, 2017 Z dash 051 PR dash 001. A request to rezone from RS 5 and RM 20A on properties located at Pennington, Lucille, and a portion of Dickerson, and to rezone from CS and RS 5 to MUGA on properties at 1412 Dickerson, as well as a portion of Dickerson Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 30 is to set a public hearing date for amendments to the subdivision regulations for June the 22, 2017. Number 31 is a new employee contract for Levi Hill. And finally, item number 35 is to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Oh, I have to note that I have to recuse myself from item 20A and 20B.
Okay. So, can we read them back?
Yes.
Make sure we have them. Item six, item seven, item eight, item 13, item 15, item 18, items 20A and 20B, item 24, item 27, 29, item 30, 31, and 35.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. So then, by process of elimination, 1A and 1B.
Yep.
We're going to hear tonight, as well as 21 and 25.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. And the public hearing was closed at that date, so you're going to give us an updated presentation, and then we'll go forward with Commissioner discussion.
Okay. Excuse me. I'm Marty Sewell with the Community Plans, and Sean Shepard will be presenting the associated SP for this. And this was to amend the southeast community plan on Burkett Road area. Relates to 5.1 acres of an overall larger site of over 143 acres, which is part of the SP. The boundary is shown in red for the community plan amendment and blue for the SP. Of course, this is undeveloped, surrounded by rural and suburban land uses, mostly suburban to the south. This is changing from suburban neighborhood evolving to suburban neighborhood center. And the recommendation is to approve. The existing zoning is AR 2A, and the proposed is for mixed use with the specific plan. And the AR 2A does not allow the uses that would be required for the mixed use. This site plan is shown here, that Sean can go into a little more detail on, but it highlights for you the area where the neighborhood center is proposed, where the policy change is proposed. And again, showing in closer up view is here. And you can see that it's across from the existing Westcott Lane. Of course, this is turned north, is to your right, as opposed to the top on this. The conservation policy is also part of the existing, well, conservation and neighborhood evolving are the existing policies. The conservation policy is shown here in the zoomed-in version for the stream buffer that is on the site. And of course, the neighborhood evolving policy, which is encouraging, excuse me, encouraging the residential development, mixture of housing types for areas that are evolving and growing, or expected to evolve over time, but does not allow for the mixed use, again, that's proposed here. The neighborhood center policy is for areas where you would want to have commercial and mixed use, variety of housing types, and the commercial would serve an area within a five-minute driving distance. The characteristics being, again, mixed use with moderate to high connectivities, connected sidewalks. Rationale in this case, as we presented previously, was that, and connected with the overall proposal, that this would allow for commercial within walking distance for the proposed 800 units and neighborhoods nearby, as well as the fact that it fronts an arterial boulevard and the major collector street plan that is proposed for five lanes, although it's not funded. At the last meeting of the, or the Planning Commission in April, when we first presented this and the public hearing was held, you asked us, or directed us, to go back to the community and hold the community meeting. And we did so on May the 4th at the Cambridge Community Center, planning, public work staff, the development team, as well as the district council member, who, by the way, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that you should have his correspondence in your information today. He's unable to attend the meeting, but he wanted to make sure that you had that and were aware of his, of that correspondence. At the community meeting, we made it clear to the public in attendance, the fact that the public hearing had been closed, but also wanted to make sure that they were aware of how they could submit information during their comments to you via emails or in the comment forums that we collected at the meeting as well. We also provided you with the question forums that were used for us to, for the development team and for the planning staff, public works, and the councilmen to answer questions that were posed. And we left the meeting without any questions being, or having addressed all of the questions that were asked at the meeting. And again, comment forums and emails, those have been provided to you, as well as posted on our website. Some of the themes expressed at the community meeting were, in general, here, the capacity and rural design of the road networks, the timing of the improvements that were proposed with this development, as well as the other developments in the area, as opposed, the idea meaning that they were concerned about when that would happen, not only with this development, but what triggers some of the other required improvements for neighboring developments. The, excuse me, the desire for more to be, again, the desire was for more to be completed on the front end. In addition to the scale of development, the overall number of units, there was concern about that, as well as how the consistency with the area of the character, and concern about setting a precedent for commercial on Burkett Road. And some noted that there was, there were positive benefits to there being some commercial proposed at this scale for the site, especially to serve the new community and the adjacent neighborhoods. And also, that there was a need for the fire station that's been included, as well as some of the other infrastructure improvements that are included with the SP, that, again, Sean will detail. And so, with that, the staff recommendation has remained approval for the plan amendment.
And so, to walk quickly through the specific plan that is proposed. As a reminder, this is to permit a mixed-use development on about 144 acres. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated plan amendment. If the associated plan amendment is not approved, staff recommends disapproval as submitted. The zoning, as Marty mentioned, is currently AR 2A on this property. The policy, he's gone over well, but conservation and suburban neighborhood evolving currently. Again, the neighborhood center proposed at the frontage along Burkett Road. As you'll recall, you deferred this and directed us to hold a community meeting and also to have the input from the council member. So we've come back with those things. This is the site plan oriented to north at the top of your screen, and for the rest of the presentation, I'm going to flip it, so north will be to your right. The policy amendment, again, is this area, the neighborhood center area, along Burkett Road. The neighborhood center would include 17,000 square feet of commercial. There would be 800 residential units, both within, some within the center and throughout the development. This project generally transitions from the more intense uses of the neighborhood center along the Burkett Road corridor to less intense residential, ending with single-family to the north and along the eastern side of the property at the bottom of your screen, which is adjacent to that rural policy area. This is the street network plan, which I, is a little difficult to see, but there will be two access points to Burkett Road. There are also future connections provided, both to the west and to the north, which would support a network if this evolving area is to develop more in the future. Those would be built to the property line as part of this proposal. The continuation of those corridors would be reliant on property owners surrounding this development choosing to redevelop, and then they would be connecting in at that time. But those won't extend past the property line as a result of this development. As a reminder, there is some flexibility in the layout and the uses. There are neighborhood districts which propose a range of uses and associated building forms and types to accommodate those. Again, transitioning from the neighborhood center and more of a mixed-use character along Burkett to some townhomes in District 3 in the center, multifamily and assisted living, and then single-family to the north and to the east. There are also special focus lots designated, which would have specific architectural standards to ensure those lots address the corner and set up a strong pedestrian realm in this development. It does meet two critical planning goals by providing a range of housing choices and diversity, and creating walkable neighborhoods through the incorporation of sidewalks, both along Burkett and throughout this development. And for those reasons, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all, subject to the approval of the associated plan amendment, or to disapprove if the plan amendment is not approved. Thank you. Okay, so for the matter of our process, the public hearing is closed, was closed. We cannot open the public hearing again on item 1A. If the commissioners decided we needed a public hearing, we do have the option of reopening it for item 1B. Or we can start our discussion and then make a determination. Any preferences?
I do want to take just a quick second to remind the Commission that, as Marty talked about, you know, you were concerned about having another meeting because you didn't feel like that the notice was enough, and that the councilman did that and held another meeting on the issue. And I think that was, as I recall, was the issue that the Commission wanted to address.
Okay. And we do have our letter from Councilman Bednay in our packet. Okay. And also for myself, can Brian, Commissioner Tibbs? No, they're not in this, right?
No.
They're out.
Our commissioners that were also at the budget hearing, I'm sure just a moment ago, they're not able to vote on this matter.
All right. So, I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Diaz.
I was trying to figure out if we have a quorum or not, but. I think it makes sense considering.
Just for the record, since you brought it up, you do.
Okay. It makes sense because there are different uses, and to be able to transition, because if it does the design changes, or something else happened, and someone else was to come here, it would be nice to be able to identify what neighborhood center and the uses would be. So, it makes sense right now, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
And Commissioner Diaz, you've watched the video. You weren't here for the original. Would you just say that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And?
And I will also state for the record that I was not here and have watched the video of the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. We have an interesting group to discuss this. Commissioner Sims?
I have a question regarding what the feedback from the community is. And first of all, I appreciate very much, it looked like you did a very professional job in going out and listening, and the feedback to us was really good. Thank you. The concerns that a lot of the communities bring up has to do with the alignment of our infrastructure, with the pace of the development. And I'm new, so I can claim a lot of just ignorance, but the other is, how do we, how do we know that, I know the budget alignment project is getting ready to help us do that better, but how do we know that development isn't outpacing infrastructure?
It's a million-dollar question that we ask all the time.
Well, I have to say, I mean, in some cases, the development does outpace infrastructure, but oftentimes, development is the answer to the infrastructure issue. That requirements are placed on developments to try and help with the infrastructure in various ways, whether that's school sightings, or whether that is traffic lights, intersections, road widenings. There's a variety of things where development is actually helping with what we, our infrastructure needs. But it certainly is stressing out the infrastructure that we have. And as you just mentioned, we're trying to do a much better job of aligning our capital improvements budget and where we want to see development with those infrastructure improvements. But I know that Public Works has looked at this one, and I believe that they think that they gave a recommendation of approval, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct with conditions.
Okay. And can you remind us one more time what the conditions were?
Sure. There were a number of them, so I'm going to speak in high level rather than reading them each out. But there were conditions related to a stoplight at the intersection of Burkett and Westcott, which is this intersection here. The trigger for that is that once 100 units have a use and occupancy permit, or an equivalent amount of traffic generating uses there, a signal warrant analysis, meaning a study of whether the signal is needed, would be required. There are requirements for turn lanes and deceleration lanes along Burkett leading up to the intersections for this project, and those are prior to the installation of that stoplight I just mentioned. There are also a requirement for a signal warrant analysis at Burkett and Old Hickory Boulevard, which is to the northeast of this project site. And that would be, that study would need to happen prior to 50% of the total build-out of this development. And then there are triggers for reevaluating that as more and more of this development is built. And then, if it is warranted at any point, this developer would construct that signal. And then there are also improvements going on to the intersection of Nolansville and Burkett, which is about a mile to the west. There are a number of improvements to that intersection that are conditions of other developments that are happening along Burkett Road. But prior to 25% of the total build-out of this project, if those improvements, which include a turn lane and some other features, have not already been constructed as a result of other projects, this project would be required to construct those. So, those are the kind of themes of the conditions.
The conditions.
Yes.
I think as a conceptual nature, I like this project a lot, and I did go out and drive all around through there, because that's the only thing I really know to do as a new, as a new commissioner at this point. I do think in the notes from the staff were very good about being able to truly review the appropriateness of it and the conditions that you put on it. I want to make sure that those conditions are included.
Commissioner Haynes?
I'm going to support this. I think this is a really good plan with a variety of housing choices, including some workforce housing, commercials, civic, green space. This is really hard to accomplish. I think he's been very thoughtful in this plan. This is a developer that's done this before in our city, in Lenox Village, so I think he has the ability to execute. I think the conditions are correct. He's having to install a lot of infrastructure himself, so I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagendier?
It's the only two of you left.
I think the only question I had was, as a Nashville Next process, this was still, this community character plan was defined. So, what? So what is the thought of us continuing, of us amending it now? It doesn't, it seems very far out. And that's what a lot of the comments that I've read from the community say, we developed a community character plan in Nashville Next, this was the decision, and this, and the use that they're saying, the use they're requesting is not appropriate under the current, so we're actually going to have to amend the plan. So can I, is there any thought to, like, why we should amend it if that was the decision in Nashville Next? And I've listened, is that an appropriate question to ask?
Well, I think in particular, the neighborhood center policy, that's something that is much easier to determine in these kinds of locations where we're talking about a greenfield development. It's much easier to determine when there actually is a proposal that we can look at. And otherwise, we would be trying to predict where those would locate without having knowledge of, of having a proposal in front of us. And this meets all of the criteria for the application of neighborhood center, and so that's the purpose of the amendment process, is so that we can go back and address these more detailed...
And find out where the neighborhood center's going to be. Like, you're not trying to predict where the neighborhood's going to be. I get that.
In that case, in this case, for sure.
So two slides forward, or maybe it's two, no, yeah, backward, yeah. Keep going to the view of the site lots, the aerial view of that whole area. How deep this is, I can go back, yeah, there. So is the only ingress, egress and ingress, I mean, the only in-road Burkitt, the only access that could ever be given to this property, Burkitt Road?
So, so right now, this property only has frontage on Burkitt. There are, the Major and Collector Street Plan shows some future arterials and corridors that would cross this property, and they have included, I'm actually, I'm going to switch plans on you so you can see them. Those connections, go a little further. Those connections here and to the north. And those would be built to the property line with this project, but in order for those to connect through, and those would go to other streets in the surrounding area and establish that network, the development would have to occur on the properties adjacent to this one. So it's a future connection, but it will not be built off of this property with this project.
So, and under the conditions, and again, they're numerous, and I appreciate and think they are appropriate, is the future phases, are they determined on those connections being made, which would mean that the properties next door would have to be developed?
So there is a condition that has to do with when the two access points to Burkitt are established, and that is driven by requirements of the fire code that you have to have two access points when you hit a certain number of units.
Yes, because we've had this conversation before.
There are not conditions that would require those other future access points to actually connect before all of this could build out.
Okay. And how many units are we talking about for this phase, if, on the, in the second piece in the request?
So the phasing plan for this project, it has, I think it's 12. I'm going to get it in front of me so that I can... Yeah, there are, there are 12 potential phases. And it would start with the neighborhood center and some of the surrounding townhome residential, and then kind of work its way, like, to the center and then along the side. The phases to the north, these single-family lots, are currently depicted as phases 11 and 12. So that would be, in general, there is a condition that would require, if the phasing plan doesn't look exactly like this, that it progresses from south to north so that we haven't hopscotched to the north end and then never built through.
Yeah, I saw that. That's a very good point, because that would be my concern. Okay. I just, we've had so many conversations recently about entry into subdivision developments, and we've actually denied a few based on the fact that there was no, there were roundabouts and no way for a fire truck to get, you know, it was questionable as to the, and I know most of the community comments were about Burkitt Road and concerns on the traffic and the visibility and the danger, and, so that is a legitimate concern. And waiting for someone to come in foreland, and I know budgets and plans, and, so I'm going to listen to Mr., Commissioner Gomel, what's his say?
Commissioner Gomel?
I'm not going to say much other than I support it. Looks reasonable to me.
Okay.
It's so insightful, thank you.
So, everybody that, that is able to has commented, and it's now either more discussion or time for a formal motion.
And we'll vote on these separately.
Yes, we'll vote on them separately. So I need a motion on 1A and 1B.
I move approval of staff's recommendation on Item 1A.
Move approval of staff's recommendation on Item 1A.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then Item 1B, a motion on Item 1B.
Move approval of staff's recommendation on Item 1B.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion?
One quick question. When you say that, staff's recommendation, that includes all the...
With conditions.
With all conditions, correct.
Motion and second. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 1A and 1B. On to Item 21. Item 21. All right. Item 21 is a request for final plat approval to create two lots, including a variance from the sidewalk requirements, at 315 Edwin Street on 0.38 acres in the RS5 zoning district. The subject property is highlighted in red, and staff recommendation is to approve the subdivision with conditions and disapprove the sidewalk variance request. The parcel currently contains one single-family dwelling and an accessory structure. The property is approximately 16,598 square feet and is proposed to be split into two lots. The RS5 zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet and is intended for single-family dwellings. The T4 urban neighborhood maintenance policy is intended to provide high levels of connectivity with complete street networks, sidewalks and bikeways, while retaining the existing character of urban residential neighborhoods. The plat proposes two lots. Both lots have 50 feet of frontage and are approximately 8,300 square feet each. There is an unimproved alley that runs behind the lots. Section 3-5.2 of the subdivision regulations establishes criteria for reviewing infill subdivisions and neighborhood maintenance policies. The proposed lots meet the minimum standards of the RS5 zoning district, and both of the lots will have frontage along a public street. In determining compatibility, we analyze lot frontage and lot area. For lot frontage, the proposed lots must have frontage either equal to or greater than 70% of the average frontage of the surrounding parcels, or equal to or greater than the surrounding lot with the least amount of frontage, whichever is greater. Both lots meet the lot frontage requirement. Lot area is determined based on the surrounding parcels as well, and the proposed lots meet the area requirement. We also look at street setback and lot orientation. Future development will have to comply with the appropriate street setbacks, and both lots are consistent with the orientation of the surrounding parcels. All other agencies have recommended approval. So a little bit of history on this subdivision. In November 2016, the applicant applied for a final plat to subdivide this property. At that time, it was determined that it could be reviewed administratively because it met the compatibility requirements for neighborhood maintenance policy. At that time, the applicant was also informed that the sidewalks would be required per the subdivision regulations, and in January 2017, the plat was approved with the conditions on your screen. In February 2017, the applicant elected to post a bond for the sidewalks, and the applicant is now seeking a variance from this sidewalk requirement. Sorry about that. So when an existing sidewalk network exists, new sidewalks must be constructed along the frontage of any new lots created by a subdivision to extend the existing network. In this case, the existing sidewalk along Lishy Avenue terminates at the beginning of the Edwin Street right-of-way, which establishes a new sidewalk network for the Edwin Street The applicant has requested a variance from this requirement to construct the required sidewalk and, along Edwin Street. These are some pictures that show the existing sidewalk along Lishy Avenue and how it rounds a corner, corner on Edwin Street. This is on the eastern side of, of Edwin Street. Here's another picture. And then this is the subject property, kind of located mid-block. And then this is a picture as we move west on Edwin, Edwin at the, near Meridian Street, where there is a residential development under construction right now that does include So before I wrap up, I just want to show this subdivision to you. This was a recent subdivision that was approved, I'm sorry, was, was brought before you for your consideration at Jones Avenue and Cherokee Avenue. This was a similar case where it was a two-lot subdivision, and the applicant was seeking a variance from the sidewalk requirement. These are some pictures along Jones Avenue, and then here, you can see the sidewalk round Cherokee Avenue, and then it stops along the Cherokee Avenue right-of-way. And then this picture shows a ditch in front of the property frontage along Cherokee. In this case, the planning commission decided to recommend approval, or they approved the subdivision with conditions, but they did disapprove the variance from the sidewalk requirement. Being that staff has not identified a unique hardship specific to this property, staff recommendation is to approve the subdivision with conditions and disapprove the sidewalk variance request. And the conditions are included on, on your screen, and these were the original conditions as well. Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
The applicant's both here, the property owner Evelyn Davis and her daughter, Laura Chouchee Davis, are here.
Okay.
They're both the applicants. I'm Ashanti Davis. I'm an attorney, and I represent them, and I also live on Edwin at 321.
Okay. So you are welcome to come up and, any combination of the three of you? And can you just state your name and address once more for the record?
Sure. My name is Ashanti Davis. I'm the daughter of Evelyn Davis, who's the property owner, and the sister of the applicant, Chouchee Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street.
Okay.
I also prepared a PowerPoint so that you all can get a better idea of the particular street that we're talking about.
Okay.
And if time permits, I would like to reserve two minutes for the battle. Thank you. And so if you'll just go to the first slide. This is 321, or excuse me, 315 Edwin Street. This is where the current structure looks like, and this is where the applicants both live. Just as a way of background, 315 Edwin Street has been in my family for over four generations. We are the fourth generation of families to live on this particular lot, and as you can see from the picture, there is water in the drainage ditch. If you don't mind going to the next slide, this is a better picture of how, on a heavy rainfall, how much water accumulates in the ditches. The ditch doesn't just run in front of this particular property, it runs along the entire east side. I live at 321, there's also a drainage ditch in my, in my front yard. You'll go to the next slide. This just is to give you an idea of how much water accumulates in these ditches and to sort of exhibit that we have a drainage problem on Edwin Street. Next slide. This is 307 Edwin. They also, excuse me, I'm sorry, also have a drainage ditch with water that accumulates whenever stormwater, or whenever we have a heavy storm or rainfall. And the next slide. This is 317 Edwin. This house was recently built, it was completed last year and it sold. There used to be a drainage ditch in this front yard, but as they redeveloped the land, they didn't, they, I assume they, they decided to contribute to the fee instead of constructing the sidewalk, but they sort of filled in the ditch, and now water accumulates in their front yard instead of just flowing down like it formerly did. This is 321 Edwin Street. This is my front yard. This is, again, just to show you, as you walk up the street, there's drainage ditches along every house on this side of the street. Next slide. And this is 325. So as you can see, the picture shown to you earlier sort of mischaracterizes the street. There are no sidewalks on the street, and there's no appreciable sidewalk anywhere near. Lishy is about 10 houses up, and Meridian's about six houses down. We are dead smack in the middle of a drainage system. So all of the water from the street, we're also, just as a way of showing you, the next slide, please, we're on a slope. So all the water sort of flows down in these ditches down the street. And this is at the very top of the street, at the beginning of Lishy, just to give you an idea of what the street looks like. And then, next slide, and then you can go on to the next slide. Just to give you an idea of how small the street is, the street is approximately 24 feet. Next slide. That's a tape measure. So the street's so small that you can take a regular tape measure from the hardware store to show you how small the street is. I tell you all this, I've lived on this street my entire life. I'm 32 years old, I've lived in that house since I was seven, I bought a house on the street. And I think that this is more, I understand why sidewalks are important. I understand why we're moving towards that. I just think in this specific case, the application doesn't meet other goals of the city, like affordable housing and being community-minded. I think this is about being community-minded, about fairness and equity, and considering factors like the unique physical characteristics of this street, the unique topography of this street. Sidewalks aren't really a cohesive construction right now until we do something about the drainage. Because to take a piecemeal approach to drainage can be problematic because it can lead to other issues like erosion and water damage to existing structures, and it can also lead to lawsuits. Just for a fact, one of our neighbors has a lawsuit pending against Metro right now due to, they have allegations that the sidewalks were built negligently, and it's caused water damage to their home. So I understand the policy, I understand the driving need for the policy, I just think in this case, a variance is appropriate to meet other goals. I know that one of the goals of the planning department is affordable housing. And in this case, the house that you currently see was built in 1984. My grandparents built the house, they didn't have a lot of money, they built it very cheaply, and there's a lot of problems with this house. We have a contractor who's here who's actually looked at the house, we've had several contractors look at the house, and everyone who's looked at the house has told us, it's not really worth fixing. It's worth just tearing it down and building something new. And because my mom owns the lot, she has an affordable option, and she can just build sort of a mid-grade house that is at least sustainable and that she can live there. The reason for the subdivision is because my sister is a young professional, and she's looking to buy her first house. As you know, we're in a housing crunch right now in Nashville, and it's sort of harder for sort of young professionals to kind of buy a house. My mother saw this as an option to sort of build two affordable houses to allow both of them to live on that lot and sort of keep that lot in our family for another four generations, hopefully. So in this case, I think a perfunctory application of the ordinance results in unfairness and equity, and contradicts other policies that are stated by Nashville and the Metro Council, which includes affordable housing. I know that with the inclusionary housing policy that has sort of been directed to this commission by the Nashville Council, that we're supposed to try to look at ways in which we can include other people in this development, that we can include people of all income levels in the development of Nashville. My mom is a high school graduate, she has a regular job, she works a nine-to-five, five days a week, she doesn't make a ton of money, the only thing of value that she actually has is this land. And my sister, as I mentioned earlier, isn't, you know, she's just a normal young professional who's just trying to get started. And so in this case, I feel like an application, a perfunctory application of the ordinance would result in inequity, and especially in light of the fact that we have a drainage issue, and until the drainage is fixed, you can't fix drainage one house at a time. You kind of have to do a cohesive plan so that it doesn't affect 325 negligently, and it doesn't affect the person at 307. And I'll read the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. So is anyone here speaking in favor of the application? Councilman Davis?
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Thank you to the planning commission staff members for all their hard work. My constituents are very smart, aren't they? I used to walk down that street. My mom was the Senate Director for Tom Joy Head Start. And she was a Metro employee, worked under Walter Hunt when he was Director of Metro, Metro Action Commission. So I'm very familiar with the street. Once again, this family, who has no relationship to me, even though their last name is Davis, very common name, has lived on the street for four generations. And as I always say, I have to back my name. It's a must. It's an affordable housing option, like the bright attorney said, that her sister is a young professional, her mother is just an average working Jane, and this is the most valuable object they have. And as a councilperson, you know, especially as you all know, I am a definite advocate for affordable housing. And whatever I need to do to make this work legislative-wise, you know, Mr. Sloan, I want to do it. Whether it's rezoning, whether it's going in front of the BZA, or redrawing a plat, or whatever we can do within the power of the Metro Government, I want to do for them. And because, you know, they're just as important as anybody else that comes up in there, but they're my constituent, and they've lived there four generations. So I feel like it's my duty and my obligation to make sure that they get what they need to get this done. And before the sidewalk ordinance came in, they've been trying to do this since November of 2016. And I'm just asking, you know, for us to find a way to restrict them from this variance. Because right now, as we can tell, there's some drainage issues going on. And all we're asking on this very large lot is allow the mother to have her own home and the daughter to have her own home. And the other daughter lives up the street, you know, so let's keep this family together. And if there's a way I can do this, you know, if there's some reason why you cannot grant this today, you know, and is there another zoning that can get them out of this restriction, I am willing to do it. Budget season's coming up, and I do have free rezoning coming up. I would do this for them because you want to do this for those who have lived in the community, who want to do affordable housing and move forward. There's going to be, the builder and contractor comes up. He also lives in the Highland Heights neighborhood, grew up there, builds homes there in his own community, who has checked this property out, and he's a better expert than I am. But I will do whatever needs to be done to get this done for these wonderful people who aren't related to me, but they live in my neighborhood. So I have to fight for them like they are related to me. So thank you for your time, and thank you, staff members, for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone here speaking in opposition? Oh, you can come.
Yeah, recruited.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. I didn't know I was speaking today, but my name is Philip Taylor. I do live in the Highland Heights area at 919 O'Nida. I also own a rental property at 317 Edwin that I'm currently rezoning at the moment. Hopefully, don't run into a similar situation. But if affordable housing is the goal here, I definitely think approving this for these ladies would definitely be a good option. That's, that way they can build together, stay together. That's all I have to say this time.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, then we'll declare the public hearing closed. Oh, do you want, do you want your two minutes for rebuttal?
If it wasn't anyone that spoke in opposition.
Okay. Great, thank you. We'll declare the public hearing closed. And Councilwoman Allen?
Sure. This is an interesting situation. If that property in the back were residential, I mean, if that structure in the back were residential and they had two residential structures already on this lot, then theoretically they could build two different homes on this lot, and then they would not be required to do a sidewalk. I'm just witting. Is that correct?
It's RS 7.5.
It's RS 7.5. But I mean, the definition of a duplex is two houses now in Nashville only. I'm just trying to think through, I don't know, that may just be a garage, and this may be a moot question, but...
It's zoned RS 5.
Yes.
And that's an accessory structure. So if they wanted to have a second structure on the lot...
It's not already residential?
Right, yeah.
I just, I just saw it and thought...
From my understanding, I think it is an accessory structure.
It's like a 900 square foot garage.
Garage, okay. But all that, all that to say, I mean, if you, if you, if you didn't know that this was zoned RS 7.5, and you would think, well, they could, they could build two houses on a lot if it were zoned RS 8. And for some reason, right now, we don't require a sidewalk when you build two houses on a lot. We only require a sidewalk when you cut a lot in half and then build two houses on the same thing. And I'm sort of rambling. I'm not sure that legally makes any difference, but it just seems noteworthy and worth bringing up. And then the other question I would ask, just to parse words, is the way we've written this is when a sidewalk network exists, new sidewalks must be constructed along the frontage of lots created by an infill subdivision to extend the network. And I think the earlier example that you showed where the sidewalk turned the corner, it was on the property that was doing the subdividing, so that that network was there, and we extended it one more lot. Does it make a difference here that the network is four blocks, four lots away, and then not at all on the other? So we're not, we're adding to something that could then be connected to the network, but I'm not sure, is that the same as extending?
So the existing network is considered existing because it does turn the corner, and because of that, this subdivision application, even though it's not contiguous to that portion of the sidewalk on Edwin, it's considered an existing network, and therefore they are required to extend that network.
So extend doesn't necessarily mean to pick it up and go forth.
It doesn't have to be contiguous.
Okay. Those were the easy outs. Okay. So that being said, again, just to ask the question of, I think the speaker raises some good issues about drainage in this particular place and how that can be done. Would we then require them to put drainage infrastructure in front of their one piece? Or how does...
Luckily, we have the all-knowing Mishu with us today.
All right, Mr. Mishu, what's the answer to this one?
Okay, well, good afternoon. Steve Mishu with Metro Water. I do have an answer. In cases like this, if the ditch is pretty deep or there's some issues like this, they will not only have to extend maybe infrastructure within their property, but sometimes they'll have to go beyond upstream and downstream to tie back in some slopes. So wherever you want a sidewalk, if you want to put it where there's a roadside ditch, you can do it. Sometimes it gets expensive. This one, I wouldn't say it's over the top as far as if you really want a sidewalk, I think you can get one here. They just may need to have to go a little bit downstream to work on a little bit more ditch work.
So on a street like this, from a stormwater perspective, if Metro were going to put a sidewalk in on the entire street, would y'all use that existing ditch, or would you put a new stormwater infrastructure under the street?
We would kind of do what they're planning on doing, but in a larger scale, and not like in a, I want to say Frankenstein-type manner. We would go from one side all the way to the other side, wherever Public Works proposes the projects. Most projects at that scale that do large sidewalk projects are done by Public Works only, and we do review those weekly. We get them all the time.
And so when Public Works, for example, if they were doing this, would they make use of that ditch, or would they totally replace it with a stormwater infrastructure and curb and gutter?
It would be the latter of the two. They will replace the ditch, roadside ditch, with pipe network, curb and gutter and everything.
Okay. And so this one piece of sidewalk that goes in, how does it tie in, how does it get created to be compatible with, I mean, because I think, you know, our goal obviously is to create enough things that then eventually they all get connected, and we have a lovely working sidewalk and lovely working stormwater infrastructure. So how does this one piece go in in the middle in a way that doesn't stymie that?
Okay, so what you'd have to do is you'd have to do an upstream head wall, and you would take the water from the ditch through a head wall into an inlet that would go into the road. And then you would go probably towards the end of the sidewalk, put another inlet, and then you'd curb it back into the ditch with another head wall. So if the upstream or downstream neighbor ever wanted to redevelop and sidewalks were required, you'd have to remove the head wall and the pipe, do an extension, and another head wall back into a ditch again.
And I notice, I mean, right now, that it's, you skip like one, two, three, four, six narrow lots, and then you get to two more, three more wide ones. So for example, if one of those wanted to do it, then they would, they would have to do the same in-and-out thing and create their piece of it.
Exactly.
Wow. And I know in general, in other neighborhoods where we're not subdividing, where someone's building, we've created the option to pay an in-loof fee that goes into the pedestrian generator zone, I mean, pedestrian benefit zone, I guess is the name of it, because of that very scenario. And generally, subdivision regs make a whole lot of sense when they're subdividing the entire street. So all that being said, I can see a lot of reasons why. This is really complicated, and maybe Carrie has the answer over there.
If I could, Councilwoman, I would just clarify that the new sidewalk ordinance does require construction of the sidewalk, requires the sidewalk in certain geographic areas that would be triggered in this case. Also, in the zoning ordinance, they're not eligible for the in-loof fee like the subdivision regulations because of the sidewalk on the same block face. And so as of July 1st, it would be a zoning requirement also to build the sidewalks in this location.
But today, they could, but they won't be able to after July 1st.
Okay, let me make sure I understand that. So the new sidewalk regulations will say...
With the construction of a new unit in certain geographic areas, that the sidewalk is triggered. There are also different geographic areas where the installation is required, and you're not eligible for the in-loof fee. And one of those is where it's on, where the sidewalk is present on the same block face. So the houses that we see here, even on the existing lots, if they redevelop in the future to build a new structure, would also have the sidewalk requirement under the zoning code.
Gotcha, okay. So I know that there also is a provision in there for Public Works to be creative with regard to how sidewalks are built. Does that allow, and I think this is one of the things we talked about in the other example that you showed where it turned the corner, with regard to, is it possible to put the sidewalk on the upstream side of the ditch and leave the ditch as the stormwater infrastructure? Is that a possibility here?
Then you're, then you're talking about putting it on someone else's property, right? You're saying on the...
No, 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 I'm saying if this neighbor simply puts it on the house side of the ditch, so that they put their sidewalk, so that the ditch remains the stormwater infrastructure for the rest of the street.
Then you'd have to look at that point as, okay, so how wide is the public right-of-way at this point? Does that require dedication? And if it does, then you're going to have to ask for that dedication all the way down the road, with all the other parcels all the way down the street. So we are looking at alternative sidewalk designs, and we're working with Public Works to do that. And Michael Briggs, if he's still here, if he hasn't abandoned us, oh, he's abandoned us, could probably speak more to that. But we are pursuing alternative sidewalk designs so that we don't have to build curb and gutter throughout our entire city.
Gotcha. Okay, so I have the benefit of being first, so I can say I'm going to listen. I've spouted off all my thoughts.
I'm leaning more towards the same thing of a creative solution that could, I mean, we still want sidewalks, and I think the, I think it's a good thing to have a sidewalk here, especially because it's in an urban transect. But I think with the issues, the stormwater issue, and also just, you know, being single-family homes, having to build something so complicated in like mid-block like that, I think it becomes a financial issue to a lot of people. So sidewalks are going to become a problem to like, you know, more people that are wanting to do these kind of projects. So I think maybe having a sidewalk that's closer to the home or having to look at the right-of-way, a compromise would be great. I don't know that I, we can solve that today, though, so I don't know. I don't know that I can support the approval right now. So I think that I would need more information, or maybe more research on this kind of stuff, because I feel like we're going to be seeing these more often. So that's where I stand right now.
Commissioner Sims?
I think I just have a question about precedent setting. Because I think in some ways, the case we saw before and that was brought to us just now is, in some ways, even more difficult. That requires some real infrastructure kind of stuff. And I'm struggling with understanding, maybe we need a workshop just on the sidewalk ordinance. But I don't know the difference, I mean, somewhere, we're asking people not only to put in sidewalks, but to actually build infrastructure, and how does that become equitable? I think that's one question. The other question is, I think we have set a precedent, and I'd be a little worried about what that does to us as a commission when we go against what we voted earlier.
But we can, I mean, if we do determine that there is a hardship that's due to unique conditions for the property.
I think there was last time, just on the property itself.
May I speak?
Hold on, I'm sorry. Let's continue discussing. If someone has a question, they'll continue, thanks.
So Carrie, you're saying that they cannot contribute a fee in lieu in this situation?
In the subdivision regulations, no, because of the existing sidewalk on the block face. Likewise, when the new zoning ordinance takes effect, that would apply to one and two-family, those locations with existing sidewalk on the same block face would also be required to install the sidewalk and not eligible for the in-loof fund.
I'm looking at page 110 in our book, and where I struggle is if you look at lots 214, 215, 216, and lots 273 through 208, and the narrowness of those lots, they're never going to be subdivided.
Under the new zoning ordinance, if they construct a new structure, so if they demolish and rebuild...
So that's when the sidewalk...
Yes, they'll be required to do a sidewalk.
So then we get into the arbitrary, is the house going to be torn down and ever rebuilt? Because unless the sidewalk is continued from Meridian to Lishy, we're going to have gaps of sidewalks, based on the fact that houses never get torn down and rebuilt or subdivided.
And I think the council's intent in doing that was so that there's contribution to the sidewalk network, that Metro can then fill in the gaps easily. So that if this, you know, if those lots do redevelop and you have a portion of the street with sidewalk, then Metro comes in. It's also being worked into the walk-and-bike sidewalk priority network, so that they're looking at where pieces of sidewalk are being built each year when they're planning where to construct sidewalks in the next fiscal year.
So if they could contribute a fee in lieu, what would that cost be for this subdivision?
$9,600.
Right, there's 100 feet of frontage over the two lots, so the current rate of 96 would be 9,600.
The in-loof fee is also likely to go up in July. And so there will be different, Public Works is calculating that every July 1st. And so it's based on Metro's, Metro's cost of, for Metro to build sidewalks over the last year. And so they're adjusting that annually, and so that will change July 1st.
Okay, I struggle with this. I completely feel their pain, and they're sort of caught in this new vortex. So I'll listen to my fellow commissioners.
All right. Oh, you're in here again. Commissioner Tibbs.
Well, of course, first, I definitely support the splitting of the lots, to get that out of the way. To me, this does qualify more for the, being able to pay into the thing, yeah, the in-loof fee because of, because of this whole drainage issue that even Steve brought up, that it is, I think it needs to be engineered from one side of the street to the other side of the street. So if they do their piece, and it's, you know, they shouldn't have to design it for the entire street, so they were doing their part. And if their part is not doing the whole street, you know, it could cause, yeah, or a more expensive solution for Metro later. solution for Metro later. So, you know, and I definitely support the sidewalks in every, most areas, but it just feels like if we, this particular area, if we piecemeal it, we could be causing more problems and more issues later, especially of all, you know, even the images we showed, but definitely the images she showed of the, you know, the severe drainage. So, and in my opinion, just based off of this, this is one issue that would be better if they were able to contribute to it, and then, you know, that be part of a bigger solution by Public Works later.
Commissioner Haggen, dear?
Yay, okay. So the house on Meridian Street, I think Commissioner Haynes touched on this, there's a sidewalk that turns the corner, there's a picture that was shown by the applicant, I believe, or no, we saw it earlier.
That was on Lishy.
On Lishy, but there is also a development at the corner of Meridian and Edwin, and that's, that on Edwin, is it Edwin, Erwin?
Edwin.
Edwin, that has a little, little strip of sidewalk, correct?
Well, that, that one will have a larger strip. They have, it's under construction right now.
It's under construction right now. So there is a little bit of sidewalk on Edwin, just right at that, right at that corner, and a little turn and curve on the other end.
Correct.
Okay. Then, then, based on what I heard from, from Carrie a minute ago, the developments on this street, any other lot, because of the change in the law as of July, will be required, the gentleman who spoke in favor, his property that has renters now, if he were to redevelop that property and set, try to sell it, it's going to be required to have a sidewalk after July, because even if it's not a subdivision. So there are going to be, in the theory of dominoes falling, as this street develops, there are going to be houses that are going to be torn down, based on what we've seen or, or developed, and something you built, and they will have to build a sidewalk, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So if even, so they don't tear it down, they just leave it there, but they do anything to that prop, what would trigger the sidewalk requirement on those?
A new structure.
A new structure, right. So the house?
So either a new single-family, or if they're doing all the building, you know?
Gotcha, okay. Then I did see the applicant mention that there was a new build on the, on that block that did not have a sidewalk constructed, but my assumption is that they didn't have to, because it wasn't a subdivision.
Right.
And the law's not changed yet.
Right, and that would be July 1st of this year.
Okay, so they didn't have to do it, and so they're going to be kind of an outlier anyway. So if we required, if everyone else on the street was required to build a sidewalk, and this applicant was as well, that house is still not going to be required to do sidewalks. So we've got one lot that's not going to have any requirements, is that correct?
It's done.
It's done, and they live there, and they've got water in their yard, and is that my?
Right, until Public Works, until it reaches the sidewalk priority list, and we get back to that.
Okay, I had to, the lawyer had to walk through the facts to figure this out. So first of all, you've done a great job. I just want to say that. Mom and sister should be proud to have the lawyer in the family. I know some families aren't proud of their lawyers in the family, but they're good when you need them, and a good one's always good to have around. So my question is, in the Planning Commission shall make findings based upon the evidence presented in each specific case that, is that a A, B, C, 1, 2, 3, 4, we have to find all of them? It's not an or, it's an and, is that correct? So we have lawyer in the room. Are we required to find A, B, C, and D?
We have a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, I know, one lawyer that's not me.
So we should end up with about six opinions.
Okay, good. I want to, I want to hear all six, so I can pick the one I like the best.
What's your question, you're an architect, answer that.
Well, the architect, well, I, based on the specific, the language, I see it as, I first read it as an or, but I believe it's an and.
I think it's an and.
It's a, must be A, B, C, and D.
I think that that is correct.
That is correct. So it's not, you can't just find C.
You need to make a finding.
Got to find A, B.
An affirmative finding, or it'd be A, B, C, and D.
You have to read it as an and.
Okay. That didn't give us our out. I was working with Commissioner, Councilmember Allen, who's kind of like, find my out here.
Well, how can you do all of that and not be inconsistent with the?
The granting of the variance shall not, shall not be detrimental, okay? A, I think we can agree, a variance is not necessarily detrimental to public safety, health, or welfare. I would say we can find that. B, conditions upon which is based on the unique for the property which vary, and not applicably general to other property, well, that's an arguable one, right? I mean.
That's up to the commission to decide.
That's up to the commission to decide. Okay, so I'm going to say B is, we can find that. C, because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. I believe, based on the mid-block location, the fact that other area, other lots have been developed and aren't required to do sidewalks, the drainage issues on this property, and the fact, I believe that C, because of the cost that would be required to construct sidewalks with head walls and all the other things that would have to happen to tie into the sewer, I believe C applies to this situation, based on the specific facts of this property in this case. I would say that as the other ones develop on this street, I'd hate for this one not to have sidewalks in front of it. The in-loof fee was what I would want to do, but we, but I don't know that we can do that, unless we find that, if we'd rendered a variance, could we then require an in-loof fee?
There is a section, subdivision reg, regulations on conditions, and it says, "In approving variances, the Planning Commission may impose such conditions as, in its judgment, shall secure substantially the objective standards and requirements of these regulations," which could be the in-loof fee.
So my personal wish, wish would be that if we could find, if we found, which I think we could, A, B, C, and D apply, unless D, unless we're just out of line with D, that we could give a variance and then require either an in-loof fee and/or, I mean, I guess you can't do a future, as these properties develop, then you're required to construct sidewalks. So something to that effect of maybe, we, we could find that they actually could get a variance, but then they do, are required to contribute an in-loof fee, would be my ideal.
I think Carrie agrees with me, and I hope the legal counsel agrees with me, but I think you can do that, and, and you can make the determination on what that contribution should be as well. But I think the Commissioner Sims makes a very good point. Understand, and then walking through each one of those and articulating how they apply to this case is extraordinarily important, because you are setting precedent, and you are, these aren't going to get easier with the sidewalk ordinance when it passes. These can, these issues are going to continue to be difficult, and a lot of the reason that's been raised is the, as people see the lots redevelop and the whole blocks redevelop all over Nashville from single to two-family units, they're concerned that, I've watched my entire block, now I get redeveloped and I have no sidewalks, and why is that not happening? And so that's what the council is trying to address with the legislation that's pending. So if you're going to do it, that's fine, I think you have the authority, as long as you walk through these steps, and that you're very clear and articulate how it, you can distinguish this from other cases.
Real quick clarifying question, excuse me. If someone wants to come in and do a significant addition or remodel to their house, as opposed to tearing it down, are they required to then build a sidewalk?
Under the, under the legislation, if they come in and, you're saying if they don't do any demolition, they just do an expansion, there's no percentage of expansion that then triggers it?
That's correct. There are some provisions for, if the right-of-way is inadequate, they might need to dedicate some right-of-way, but there's no sidewalk construction requirement unless they're building a new unit.
So my concern globally is we're going to, because of this ordinance, people are going to start doing these god-awful additions and remodels to avoid having to construct a sidewalk. So are we going to create that, that arbitrary process?
I think in some circumstances, you may end up with that, but one of the things that Carrie was pointing out was a compromise. Councilwoman Henderson has done extraordinary work over the last year with the community, with the chamber, with the, the home builders, in trying to find a middle ground, and in doing so, one of the, one of the middle grounds that was settled on is that when you, in a single-family, and make, not maybe, I'm sure Carrie can articulate this better, but instead of having to build them when you're doing an expansion, that you're, you dedicate the right-of-way, because so much of what holds back Metro's ability to build these sidewalks is that we have to go through and acquire the right-of-way from all the property owners, and it was a way to at least have that, have that property owner, that developer, dedicate over that, that right-of-way, and that was one of the settlements.
Can I ask one other question before we do our last commissioner? And that's, I mean, if one of the goals is affordable housing, and you're putting $10,000 in a sidewalk fee, have, is there anything in there that talks about provisions for affordable housing? Because adding $10,000 onto the cost for a low-income person to buy affordable house will make a difference.
There is no provision, and under the zoning code, they would also have to meet a hardship. I would say that there's, these lots could be sold to a developer for affordable housing, or the family could stay there, or they could be sold for market-rate housing with this subdivision.
No, I'm just thinking, generally, citywide, as we're looking at opportunities to get affordable infill housing, you put $10,000 onto that, that's going to make the difference between it being affordable and not being affordable.
Well, this is also, I mean, these are single-family and two-family, and so I think, I suspect where we'll see a lot of our affordable infill housing in urban areas is projects with increased density. So instead of doing one or two, they're doing, you know, six, maybe.
Although there's still some, there's still some lots that are available for the thing, and there's still nonprofits doing it, trying to do it. It just seems like something we might want to talk about as a policy going forward. Commissioner Gobble?
Again, I, my compliments, that was excellent presentation, Ms. Davis, very well done. You know, I am concerned about the precedent, as somebody who's served on another commission and along with some things, and then come back year after year after year, having it quoted back to me. That worries me. At the same time, there are thousands of lots in Nashville that have this kind of condition or worse. You know, the one I grew up in has this kind of condition. You know, if you tried to put a sidewalk in front of that house, you would have, and tried to take that one lot and solve the block's problem, it's extremely difficult, if not impossible. So one of the things I'd like to encourage is, is more of a dialogue, as this thing becomes more and more common, everybody agrees with the goal, but we've got to come up with some creativity, and how do you incorporate drainage around it, particularly on interim basis? You know, dumping it out into the street and then collecting it back is not really a great system, and it takes a whole block to, to analyze that, you know, you just, is, but I agree with other commissioners, if we can articulate why this is unique, and we can figure out how to do that, and put some kind of fee in lieu of, that would make more sense, but we've got to be prepared for this thing to be read back to us by somebody else. And it's, and again, you know, we've got this problem, and I, I would really like to see Public Works and some others sit down and say, how do you visit, how do you deal with these drainage dishes, ditches, sloping lots, hillsides, streets that go up and down, and?
Tree-lined streets.
Tree-lined streets, and all of that, and how do we come up with creative ways to, to solve these problems without bankrupting the small homeowner? So that's kind of where I am. I'll listen.
Commissioner Blocksher.
Well, I mean, I guess the issue here, which everyone has stated in one way or another, is whether it is smart development, smart planning, to ask one homeowner to put a sidewalk in, in a, in a stretch of street, that it really does not make sense to do piecemeal. Like if it's, if it's something that needs to be done cohesively, and we've had the Public Works expert tell us how it could be done, but it sounded pretty complex, sounded like it could be done, but that wouldn't be the optimal way to do it. Is this something that we should be asking one homeowner to do? Is it smart planning? And it doesn't seem like it would be, to me, and we talked a lot about precedent setting, I'm not sure I'm as concerned about that, because I'm not sure it would ever make sense for me to have one homeowner put in a stretch of street where it needed to be done cohesively. Again, if it was always better for it to be done in a cohesive manner throughout the entire street, should one homeowner ever be doing it on their own, I guess, is my question? So I mean, I would be in favor of creative solution, somehow that the variance could be granted, but also not undermine our intent of having some type of contribution to the sidewalk, sidewalk network.
Can I ask one more question? If they, if they ended up having to build the sidewalk, is there any requirement that the sidewalk would have to do everything that it needs to, to make the stormwater function efficiently?
Absolutely.
It is, okay. So they would have to do this whole thing? They can't just go pour?
Right.
A stretch of sidewalk? They have to submit instruction details that are approved by Public Works. Okay.
One quick question, does that include a curb as well?
In, in this condition, it will. It'll have curb and gutter and head walls, as they talked about.
So Abby, does, does a current homeowner have enough right-of-way in front that if we granted a variance, that in the future, if they came, if Public Works came along and deemed this street eligible for a sidewalk, they can construct it? Is there enough right-of-way?
So the plaque shows about 50 feet of, of right-of-way. 26 of that about, approximately, is pavement, so there should be ample room for, to bill to the local street standard, which is a five-foot sidewalk and four-foot planting strip. My understanding is that the local streets range from about 45 feet to 46, or to 60 feet of right-of-way, so on this, this street is pretty typical of a Nashville local street.
And then, is it okay to ask the applicant a question? I mean, if we're talking about a contribution to the in-loof fee program, is the applicant willing to support that?
So, as I mentioned, so, I'm sorry, as I mentioned, but I actually didn't mention this, so, it's actually kind of funny, this is providential. My parents owned that lot for a long time, my dad passed away last year, so my mom is now on a single income, so this is another reason why she's trying to do that. $10,000 is steep for them, but I understand the sidewalk policy, so if the commission was willing to sort of consider a contribution that sort of works within their budget, like they contribute to the in-loof fee, but maybe not $10,000, maybe some other fee, I don't know that amount, but I understand why sidewalks are important to the city. I just think there's a lot of things, as you guys have all discussed, that are sort of at play here, and it's sort of different. I understand why you all are worried about precedent, but this particular street is different. The last applicant who was here, he actually had sidewalks on the front part of his property. The side part of his property didn't have sidewalks, so he had appreciable sidewalks to walk. I can walk the entire length of my street, which I do every day, to walk our dog, and there's no sidewalk. I walk every day on that street, and there's no sidewalk. And so in this case, it's a little different, because we're right smack in the middle, my house is as well, I'm right smack in the middle of the drainage. And so in this case, it's more expensive to construct the sidewalk, and the in-loof fee, for my, for these particular applicants, does create a hardship, so.
I think, I think the slippery slope we get into is, once we start negotiating fees, I think we've got to be consistent with that, and if, if there are hardships, and we could say A, B, C, D, we need to rely on staff to say, here's the in-loof fee, and we don't start wavering on that, because that, that would be a dangerous precedent.
Well, is there a second place to apply for a hardship on the fee that's not us?
Generally, financial hardships are not considered hardships.
Right, so who would, who would they, if they have a financial hardship with the in-loof fee, who would they go to? Nobody?
In fact, we in our last, if we're going to talk about the previous example that we talked about, we specifically said, financial hardship is not, is not a consideration. So I would really want to keep our record clear on this, that that is not a reason for this determination, and I am, I am vehemently opposed to us getting into that conversation.
And I want to kind of try this on for size, on, you know, for example, the street in Green Hills, that's kind of the poster child for why we wanted one, you know, one, one lot at a time to create it, because by the time you get to the whole street, you miss the opportunity to put the sidewalk in, in the whole street. And, you know, if, if next week, on this same street, you know, a developer who can pass that cost on comes to us with lot 208 with the exact same circumstances, it'd be easy for me to say no to him, because he's not, you know, I don't, you know, they've made a great, a great case, and they're very likable people. Unfortunately, that's not how we make decisions. So I'm just, you know, the, I think the precedent issue is very, is very important here, to try to think through, if, if we say things today and then put them back in the streets where we were trying to make a difference, do we just undo? where we were trying to make a difference, did we just undo what, what we were trying to create with the council ordinance? You know, or if, if someone who can pass the cost on comes back with the very same statement, will we have a way to treat him differently? I don't, I don't think so.
Well, I think, do you believe that this is a different, if we go by the factual scenario, that we specifically on the record say, this is based on the topographical infrastructure, physical surroundings, there are specific facts in this situation? And that the conditions be an in-lu fee and a right-of-way? We can, we, we, back to Director Sloan's point, we have to be specific about the findings. It's not about financial hardship, it's not about being in the middle of the block.
Yeah.
Because that's not, it's, it's about infrastructure, the cost, the prohibitive, not cost, the prohibitive and detailed need for infrastructure that would have to be borne by one homeowner versus that to benefit a whole block, that's specific to the property.
And I just want to reiterate too, and Commissioner Blackshear said, is, I still feel like this whole street needs to be engineered and it cannot be piecemealed in the middle. I feel like the whole street needs to be engineered and some streets don't require that, like the street that I remember in Green Hills had a different situation than this street does. So I still feel like we could be, this is a perfect example of this type of, approving this kind of variance.
So just to follow up, so perhaps we would be comfortable as streets with this kind of ditch on them? It would be consistent with the statements that we're having here? And on other streets where drainage is not such an issue, that's a different set of topographical issues. I just, I just want to get comfortable with that.
Not just the ditch, I think it's the whole engineering of the drainage there. I mean, there are some ditches that work, you can make it work, but not this one.
I have to say though, that if we're going by that logic, then logically, you know, with that reason, every street would end up being better if we engineered the whole street and had stormwater system in every street, you know, done cohesively. So I don't know that we can use that reason and then not have it come back again in other streets too, because Nashville is not flat anywhere.
Exactly.
And we have stormwater issues everywhere. So, ugh, I don't know that we can use that reason.
But whose responsibility is it to hear of our stormwater issues? One single homeowner in the middle of a block? I mean, getting that, I don't want to put form over function.
Right, but we approved that bill that said that we would, you know, that we are going to request or require that.
I have, I think my concern is less around how we justify it, is it is precedent setting is really about, do we have, are we following the same principles and rules in our decision-making? And we didn't in the last case. We, I think partly because the other one didn't have an attorney as talented as you are. And we argued it from, primarily from a financial standpoint, we didn't go through the four steps of did this meet this? We, and I think somewhere, we have to be really cautious that we set up a set of principles or rules out of which we're going to decide these things. And I'm okay about whatever they end up being, but we don't have that yet. So we make some on financial, some because it's middle of the block, some, and I think that sets us on some pretty fragile ground here.
Well, I can say, you can't do it on financial and you can't do it just because it's the middle of the block.
Right. Probably had more experience, and maybe this one gone first, they could have come and argued something different. So we have to have the same kind of decision-making principle, rules out of which we're making these decisions, and we haven't done that yet, so.
Well, so in our defense, it's pretty new, right? I mean, this is, it's, it's something we need to think about. I mean, it's good we're getting some of these issues, even though it's about to go to play.
The other piece of it is, we, I did go through these exact factors for that last case, in my mind, maybe not articulated. And I don't think a ditch is, it's, they didn't argue a hardship, that wasn't anything but financial. That was the only thing they said. They said, we can't afford it. They never said we can't do the ditch.
You're going to see many more arguments now. I mean, she's just done a great job of setting that.
Exactly. But again, that's what the law, but that's what the variance says. And the variance, that rule says, physical surroundings, shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved creates a hardship. That's what it says. So they have to meet that test. So that's our determinate, that's what we have to determine. Does this meet the test? If it doesn't, then as a commission, we've made a statement. But the last one didn't because they never said it did. They never showed us anything that it did, it was a ditch. A ditch by itself does not create a physical, it's not unique to the property.
Yeah, and it doesn't require redoing the entire street, that particular one was just that, that area for it. So at least that's what my feeling is, it's not, it's a difference when you're dealing with your area and you have to engineer that, but when you're engineering one side of the street to the other, that to me is why this falls into the hardship.
Councilman Davis, did you, did you have something else to say? Please come back.
All right, please help me colleague with this one. We're in budget season. I did requests in 2016 where we're facing these issues, and I can do it this time into the capital improvements budget. You know, I don't want to create an extra problem, but if I ask, you know, 21 or 27 of my, my good friends if they can please, you know, put this in the budget, if we, I don't, I'm not suggesting a deferral, but if we defer to just one meeting and then we can say, hey, we got it, you know, in the, in our capital improvements budget, so eventually the whole street will be re-engineered, done, could that, could that get them out of the situation that they're in now?
Well, so the difficulty of what I think that the councilman is, is discussing is, is it'd be a line item in the capital spending plan, it'd have to be in the capital improvements budget, but then it'd have to be a line item in the capital spending plan. And then you may be moving that project above other projects that score vastly higher than this one for a whole variety of reasons, being close to a school, being close to a park, being part of a greater network, so a lot of reasons that, that it still might not increase. But I will bring something up that, that the vice chair raised just a moment ago, and that is that there's a need for assistance for infrastructure, for affordable housing developments, and a grant program to be able to administer that. Because we're talking about sidewalks, we're talking about this type of infrastructure right now, but, and actually sidewalks is where it's, it's come up before. Our staff, we've discussed at length, a number of multifamily affordable housing projects that are far enough away from a transit stop that we wanted to require a sidewalk that reached, you know, quarter mile to a transit stop because we felt that that was necessary for that, for us in understanding the impact that that had on that affordable housing project. And the only solution that we've really been able to come up with, and it's really amplified even more in a single-family project like this, is a grant, is a grant program where we're able to reach into that and, and help with these infrastructure. And I would even try to narrow it just to infrastructure so that it doesn't get spent on a lot of other things. But infrastructure with the whole community benefits, not just the one project. And sidewalks, regardless of where you put them, they benefit the whole community. So that, it's something that we've talked about internally, I don't, unfortunately, right now, we don't have that tool in front of us. So if, if a deferral is, is in the, in the works where we can get to that, then that's a possibility. But I hesitate in saying that there's a way to do it in the capital spending plan and capital improvements budget.
But I think, following up on that point, I mean, I think this is a conversation, it's broader than this one project. But I do think that as we're looking at the city's efforts to promote affordable housing and we're passing simultaneous legislation that's basically adding $10,000 to, to, you know, a house, that does, that's counterintuitive, that doesn't work. And that's the difference between something that's affordable and not affordable. So we should be looking at.
It's the beautiful balance of planning.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Mr. Director, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Director. And for, for, for one of my regular citizens, I don't mind doing this. If there's another larger development coming in, which, you know, we can require for them, if they're touching the street to, to do sidewalks and do drainage along certain intersections, is that correct?
There has to be a direct nexus between that project and the need for that infrastructure, that, that, that project is triggering the need for that particular piece of infrastructure.
So not planning, but if the councilperson wanted to, if, if development is on Edwin, you know, and touching, even if the property is touching Edwin, that street, could the councilperson require that into an SP or a regulatory SP?
It is, it's hard to, for me to answer that blanketly without seeing the project, the size of the project, and what would be the gain or, what would be the community benefit of requiring the infrastructure along that particular section of road? And it, because to do otherwise is getting really close to contract zoning.
Okay, because I would not, you know, to me personally, I'm okay with being wrong. Okay? That's why we have a lot of smart people like folks up here. But, you know, by passing the cost on to a developer, A, Metro doesn't have to spend the taxpayers' money, and these nice people don't get penalized. And that's why I'm trying to make the suggestion, you know, because if, let's say, next planning commission meeting, you know, there might be a project on Meridian at Edwin, you know, large development, you know, next street over, I can maybe require them to do the infrastructure.
I just thought of something else that I, that I want to ask Ms. Logan. In the, in the legislation that Council Lady Henderson is promoting, isn't there also some language about that if Public Works has a project in, in the pipeline, if you will, that that also alters the requirements for the property owner?
It has to be in the capital spending plan. So it has to be something that's actually been funded, that's the only way to know that it's going to be constructed in any certain amount of time. So just being in the capital improvements budget wouldn't meet that threshold, it would have to be funded.
But if it is in the capital spending plan, if a project has been called out specifically in the capital spending plan, then what's the implications?
Then they wouldn't have to construct the sidewalk.
They would not have to construct?
They would be eligible, I think, to contribute towards that project, still with the in-lu fee, which will go up when the ordinance, by the time the ordinance is adopted in July.
Thanks for the clarification.
Is the applicant okay with a deferral?
They asked them. Oh, I see.
From a pending legislation standpoint, at what, at what point are they in front of that change? This is a subdivision, so it doesn't have to go to council, right? So we'll make the ultimate decision on this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just thinking, council stuff starts getting pushed out if we, if we do anything, but if we're just looking at us.
My mom, who is the property owner, I defer to her, she says that she would just prefer you all to make a decision today. I think this is, because this has all been pending for such a long time, so I think she just wants some finality.
Just to get the, I guess, to keep going, I'm just going, I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay, so we can kind of...
Please do.
Okay. Because of the, just to be consistent, I think, with our logic and how we've been deciding on some, some legislation, or, you know, some bills that are going through right now, I would say, and also because this is a broader conversation that we should be having, I'm going to say that I make a motion to support and approve staff recommendation on this with the conditions.
Do we have a second? So this to support staff recommendation for the subdivision and not approving the sidewalk variance? Do we have a second? All right. If there's no second, then we have to withdraw the motion, or what?
The motion.
The motion dies.
If there's no second, the motion fails for a second.
Is there a second attempt at a motion?
I can make a, I'll try. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, that the staff, take the staff's recommendation to approve the subdivision and approve the variance based on the following reasons. The planning, the law, well, according to our staff report, the law states, "The planning commission shall make findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each specific case that, A, the granting of variance shall not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to the other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located." I believe, I would like to make a motion that we've, that the commission finds that that is, that is actually the case here, that we've also found, B, the conditions upon which the request for a variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other property, based on the finding that this specific piece of property has no other sidewalks on the block, there are infrastructure requirements that are vastly, are undue hardship to any property owner, single property owner, based on drainage conditions and infrastructure needs that would need to be put in place for that block face. That, C, because of a particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. And that, yes, that is correct, that based on the physical surroundings, the block and every piece of property, on the evidence we were shown, have drainage issues in the ditch, not because it's a ditch, because there are drainage issues on that property that require extensive infrastructure development, that this would be a particular hardship to any property owner at this point, unless it was done by Public Works or in a systematic manner. Is that too much? Keep going. And D, the strict, and D, the variance shall not in any manner vary from the provisions of the adopted general plan, including its constituent elements. And that this is, because it's in the middle of a block face, in the middle of the block with no contiguous sidewalks, that it is not, it doesn't have to be contiguous, but because of the, the exact nature of where this, of the infrastructure needs, that the variance should be granted. I probably went too far.
Can I ask a question regarding?
The motion's not finished yet. Hang on, one second, motion's not finished yet. And that we approve with the conditions that they make, that, that the applicant submit the in-lu fee for the sidewalks and that a right-of-way be granted to Public Works if and when the sidewalks are, are to be built.
I second it.
Okay, now you may ask a question.
That was my question. Sorry, that was a question, and I probably was wrong.
It's motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor? So let's get by hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, oops, eight to one. Okay, motion carries.
I went too far.
That was very detailed. Yes.
Best motion I've ever heard.
Can everyone make it through one more? Before, without a break? All right. Item 25.
The next item on this meeting's agenda is item 25. This is a request to rezone property located at 912 Masman Drive from RS 10 to RS 5. The subject property is outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. As previously stated, the property is located at 912 Masman Drive, just east of Frontage Road. The site contains a total of 8.23 acres. The property is currently vacant. The site is currently zoned RS 10, which is intended for single-family dwellings and requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. requires a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. The land use policy for the site is T-three suburban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to preserve the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. These areas have an established development pattern consisting of low to moderate residential The property, which is highlighted, shaded in blue on your screen, is located on a scene between large single-family lots to the west and south. Smaller single-family lots are located to the east, and an isolated area of multifamily is located in between, identified as parcel two-fifty-seven. As shown on the image, the Bel Air subdivision contains lots with an average lot size of nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-five square feet. Properties to the west, which front Masman Drive, are primarily large single-family lots. These lots contain an average of one-point-two-three acres. Given the average lot size of the neighborhood to the east, the larger single-family lots to the west, the proposed RS-five zone district is inconsistent with the established character of the developed single-family properties. Given the neighborhood maintenance policy, the zoning as it exists permits the development of the property in a manner that is consistent with the existing subdivisions in the area, and therefore, staff's recommendation is to disapprove.
I guess the applicant's not in the room for us to open a public hearing. So, we will have no public hearing?
No, no.
We have a public hearing?
We should open, open and close the public.
We'll open the public hearing? I see no applicant.
I see no one.
I see lots of people.
Do you guys want to speak in favor or opposition?
Just for the record, because the camera's only catching us, that's just our staff.
I will point out, there was a letter from the council member in, in your packet.
Okay. Okay. So, public hearing is closed, and we will start our debate. We'll start this way. Commissioner Blackshear?
I agree with staff's analysis, and I've read the council lady's letter, so I would be in favor of the disapproval.
Should I make a motion, or should we? Well, we can go around if people want, you want to make a motion? Okay.
I make a move that we accept staff's recommendation to disapprove the item.
Any discussion?
Because it's inconsistent with the policy. For the record.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. That was, that was easy. All right. Directors, what's first on our list? Do your directors report?
You guys are usually so beaten down by the time you get to me that I don't have a chance to talk. But we, we had a budget hearing last night, it went well. We were working aggressively with the Public Works Department and with MTA and others to help, to develop a division of transportation that will be housed over at Public Works, that will be made up of a number of our employees, the Public Works employees, and MTA employees, to work towards the goal of solving a lot of our transportation problems. And we're very excited about that. We're actually, for the first time, I think, at least in the history of the planning department that I'm aware of, hiring an engineer as one of our, our folk to come on board, and Public Works is hiring a planner. Cross-pollinating, I guess, to start to work together. But that's, that's actually one of the major things that, and we got three positions to help with that in the budget, at least, I'll retract that. The mayor recommended three new positions in our department, and it's in front of the council now to make a decision on whether to approve those positions. We did also ask for some money in the capital improvements budget, because, as you all know, we have difficult, because y'all are constantly learning new names, we have a lot of turnover. We had twenty-five percent turnover in the last year, which I, I don't know if there is a department out there that could possibly keep up with that pace, and we've done that for a number of years now. And some of the issues that I raised are additional funds for continuing education, and we really didn't get much of that. And I think that it's very important to let our employees know that we care about their careers, that they work very hard for us, they work at late hours, many, many days, and so, that's one of the things that we've asked for that, that we didn't see, that, that I'm pitching now. And then, also.
Was there a specific amount mentioned?
There was a specific amount mentioned. And I'll make sure that you're aware of it, council lady. And also, I wanted to try and, frankly, remodel our office because of a variety of reasons. One, it hasn't been done in over a decade, but as we change the way that we work with other departments, and we're, and we're working in a much more collaborative way with a lot of departments now, the, the space that was designed for us over a decade ago with cubicles and, you know, desks that are cordoned off, really do not provide us the, the space to be able to spread out and do that sort of collaboration. If you ever visit any of the local engineering offices or architecture offices, you know that those collaborative spaces exist throughout those offices, and they're critical to being we get the work done. And so, in the capital improvements budget, that we've requested money to be able to do that as well. And.